To discuss anything on your mind with the board at the end of the meeting. And the same process fill out the public comment form and return it to the board table. And we'll bring you up at that time. As a reminder, all board members were provided background information to the items on the agenda in preparation for tonight's meeting. So when you see us kind of some things, we can go through them a little quickly. It's not that we didn't look at it. We've all had plenty of opportunity to understand and ask questions about those items. Our meeting is also being livestreamed tonight, so we welcome those who are viewing us remotely. With that, we will begin our meeting with our school presentation. So invite the Sailor School Principal up to address us. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Allenis, Dr. Stevens, and all our other staff, we're here tonight, and our parents and families, and teachers, and students, thank you for coming tonight.
We have our student council here, and they would like to talk to you about a service project we've been doing this month, and some of the other service projects that they do throughout the year.
So I'm going to start by introducing my student council. I would say we have two teachers who help out with the student council. One of them is not here this evening, but we do have a stand-in. So Mrs. Alicia Campbell, and then Mrs. Laura Robertson is our stand-in. They are here tonight to keep our kids a little bit calm because they were nervous about speaking tonight, which I can completely understand.
Danielle's got nervous.
We also have Noralie Haley, Daniel White, and Aubrey Taiyi, who are all 4th graders. Wow, they come up so fast. But it's amazing to say they're 4th graders. But they're going to talk about the service projects that they've been doing there.
Hello, my name is Danielle. We are part of the Sailor Student Council, and we are going to talk to you about what we do during the year for our school and community. In September, we helped Mrs. Kinsey welcome students every morning during Start with Hello Week. This month, we are having an October sock drive to donate socks to our local homeless shelter, Gabriel's Farm.
In November, we plan to have a courtyard cleanup event to rake leaves and clean up our sailor courtyard. In December, we plan to make cards for the elderly and possibly help the Salvation Army collect donations. In February, we plan to have a Spread the Love Peanut Butter Drive for our local pantry.
Hello, my name is Noralie. And in April, we plan to have another courtyard cleanup to get our school looking great for spring. We also plan to give our fellow classmates I-Learn and I-Read encouragement during testing time by writing words of wisdom on our sidewalk, so they can see it on their way in and be ready to take on their tests. I think student council is a great program for students because it allows them to feel in charge and helpful to the school and community. Joining student council allows me to use my leadership skills to help those around me. I love to be in things after school that help me and other people be better people.
Probably not going to let you off that easy because we've got the board. I'm sure might have some questions for those kids, right? Has anybody had anything for the kids? I have a question. I'd like to know, what's your favorite part about being on the student council?
I like, my favorite thing about student council is to make new friends. I like to be a leader.
I like student council. I like helping people, and I think it's really nice because I get to be in it and help the homeless and other people.
I like student council because all the fun things we do. Throughout this month, we will do a lot of fun things throughout the year. That's why I love student council.
Great, thank you.
So far this month, we have over 300 pairs of socks.
Wow.
So I have a question. How were the students selected to serve on this?
They apply, and we kind of go through their applications together as a team and, you know, see how they answered all the questions on the application and whether or not it would be a good fit.
We have representatives from third, fourth, and fifth grade, so we have many members. It's hard to choose, though.
That's awesome, awesome. Any other thoughts or comments?
I would like to say that I'm sure your teachers are proud of you, as well as your families. You're taking on a role at such a young age to show leadership skills and how much you care about people, and I want to applaud you for that. Thank you.
You all did such a great job tonight. There's a lot of adults who can't do what you just did tonight. So that's a great skill that you've already developed in leadership, that you're able to come up in front of this scary board and talk to us. Well, some of us. But you all did a very, very good job. And we thank you for inviting us to your school this evening and getting the chance to meet you. And just so you don't have to stay for the whole meeting if you don't want to. You're welcome to, but you're also welcome to go home and working on your homework.
Mrs. Malata, may I ask them two more quick questions?
Sure.
First question is, what do you guys think about the new ventilators in the classroom instead of the long ones? Anybody want to answer that one?
Did you notice?
Are the classrooms any quieter? Okay, so the adults are going to guess. Okay, all right, so then you guys definitely need to answer this one. What do you think of the library? What's your favorite part of the library? Go ahead, Danielle, come on up.
My favorite part of the library is the diary, the Wimpy Book section. Because those books are so long and so good. Like, I don't know why, but so many people in my class love them.
How about the fact that we changed the way that the books are organized? Do you guys like that better, where you can go to the different sections and find, whether it be those diary, the Wimpy Kit, or other graphic novels or anything? You like that? Good.
And then we just got new shelving put together over the weekend, like over all break, the custodians were able to do that. And so that'll get the younger, the picture books organized, kind of like at a record store where you can collect through to see that. I mean, it'll be by genre, but it will be easier for them to see by flipping rather than kind of searching on a shelf. So we're excited to get those packed up and ready to roll.
Yeah, those are great. The one thing that we learned with when we were working with the Porter County Library about getting these shelves was our librarian said, how do you keep them in order? And Jessie Butts, their executive director, said, you don't. Which was like, oh, but now they're really excited.
Great.
How are they, the three young people that are here, plus the others supporting you, and some of the decisions you have to make?
Well, actually, they asked for my input. So like the Spread the Love campaign, I had that a previous one I worked on, and I thought it was like a great idea. I think food injuries have problems in the protein sources, so just collecting one item, peanut butter, into the containers and kind of catch spread the love in the debris. So yeah, they, and they asked me, like, do you think it's right time for a courtyard cleanup? And yeah, absolutely.
That's good.
And they're very helpful.
How many students do you have?
Um, just about 300.
Anybody have anything else? Well, if not, again, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for welcoming us, and good luck to you. And I think we're seeing some future leaders. I'm sure we'll probably see you in years ahead, probably back here again talking to us as student council representatives, maybe in your middle schools or high schools. So this is a great start, so thank you.
Thank you.
We'll give you a minute if you want to leave. You can stay if you'd like. Okay, we'll move on to our agenda now. We have any adjustments to the agenda from the board this evening? Not? We have our superintendent's consent agenda, which has our personnel report, our donation report, our claims report, and our facility use request report. Do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
The motion is second. Is there any discussion or questions? Is there any un-called roll, please?
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vazquez?
Yes.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes.
Next, we have our board's consent agenda, which includes our minutes of our special board meeting, our budget hearing from October the 9th, minutes of the discussion meeting of October the 9th. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion?
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing un-called, roll please.
Trustee Vazquez?
Yes.
Trustee Malata?
I'm going to abstain since I was not at that meeting.
Same here. Trustee Finley abstaining, I was not at that meeting as well. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
That's not a quorum, right? So we only had two of the five members. We just have to do it next meeting. We'll do it next meeting. We'll bring that back next meeting. I guess I was remiss, I should have mentioned that trustee Wilkie, or Wilkie Wireman now is not with us to IC, just recently bearing this on her honeymoon, so she's probably having a lot more fun. Congratulations to her. Next, we have our board development committee reports. Do we have any board reports tonight?
Just like to announce that the food pantry annual meeting will be held this Thursday, the 26th. And the purpose for that annual meeting is to acknowledge all the volunteers. And so I look forward to being there because they are outstanding, they're very dedicated, and so this is an opportunity to say thank you.
Any other board reports? If not, we'll move on to our old business. We have the adoption of the 2024 Budget Bus Replacement Plan and Capital Projects Funds. Attorney, do we need to read this, or can we just reference that it was, we had the public hearing on it? And reference the public hearing, it's been posted as well. So as I just mentioned, we did have a public hearing on October the 9th for these items. So the adoption and entertaining motion on these items based off of the previous discussion and that public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve the 2024 Budget Bus Replacement Plan and Capital Projects Fund?
Make a motion to approve the 2024 budget, including the bus replacement plan and capital projects fund.
The motion is second.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing un-called, roll please.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vazquez?
Yes.
Next, we have a recommendation and approval of our non-union support staff increases.
So the following proposal provided in your packet includes increases for all of our non-union groups. This is our non-union support staff groups. This is to remain competitive in the current economic climate. These increases are reflective of our recognition of the need to be able to hire and retain qualified and talented personnel in positions throughout the district.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the non-union staff, support staff pay increases?
Make a motion to approve the non-union support staff increases?
The motion is second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing un-called, roll please.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vazquez?
Yes.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
It will move on to new business. We have our approval of the resolution R-03-23 to adopt the Bus Replacement Plan. This resolution is adopted by the Board of Trustees of the School Corporation below Portage Township Schools, Porter County, Indiana, whereas a school bus replacement plan has been established, whereas the Board of Trustees is required under IC 20-40-18-9 to adopt a plan for the school bus replacement plan. And whereas the Board of Trustees held a public hearing on the plan date in place below, Monday, October the 9th, 2023, 6240 US Highway 6, Portage, Indiana. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees at the plan entitled Bus Replacement Plan, this resolution is adopted by the Board of Trustees' plan with respect to the school bus replacement plan. Be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees shall submit a certified copy of this resolution to the Department of Local Government Finance as required by IC 20-40-18-9. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
With motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing un-called, roll please.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vazquez?
Yes.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes.
Next, we have our approval of resolution R-04-2023 to adopt the CPF Plan. This resolution is adopted by the Board of Trustees of the School Corporation below Portage Township Schools, Porter, Indiana, Porter County, Indiana, whereas a capital project plan has been established, and whereas the Board of Trustees is required under IC 20-40-18-6 to adopt a plan for the capital project plan, and whereas the Board of Trustees held a public hearing on the plan on the date in place below, October the 9th, 2023.
To adopt the CPF Plan.
Second.
The motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing un-called, roll please.
Trustee Vazquez?
Yes.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Next, we have our approval of resolution R-05-2023 to transfer funds from the Education Fund to the Operations Fund. Resolution to transfer amounts from the Education Fund to the Operations Fund. This resolution is adopted by the Board of School Trustees of the Portage Township School Corporation of Porter County, Indiana, whereas the School Board of Trustees is a governing body of the Portage Township School Corporation, Porter County, Indiana, and whereas the Board of School Trustees has established an Education Fund and Operations Fund, whereas Indiana Code 20-40-2-3 requires distributions of tuition support to be received in the Education Fund. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of School Trustees authorizes the treasurer of the Portage Township School Corporation to transfer up to the total amount of $6,400,000 during the 2024 from the Education Fund to the Operations Fund to cover expenditures that are not allocated to student instruction and learning under Indiana Code 20-42.5. Adopted this 23rd day of October, 2023, do we have a motion to approve the resolution to transfer the funds from the Education Fund to the Operations Fund?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Dr. Allenis, can you explain this for those that might be viewing?
Sure. So the state of Indiana really is specific about the amount of a transfer into operations from the Education Fund. The idea is that it's obviously pricey to operate a school district when you're considering utilities, the price of our support staff, such as custodial staff, our bus drivers. They are not directly in the educational instructional setting. However, obviously extremely important to the success of our students and the daily operations of what is a quality and safe school district. So that the transfer of these dollars is specifically to be able to provide the educational experience for our students, as well as all the services and resources that aren't in the instructional setting.
So for those who might be confused, we're not taking anything away from the educational part of any, sorting anything that's going to the kids from the education.
Correct, right. You are correct.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing un-called, roll please.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vazquez?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have our approval of resolution R-6-2023 to adopt the financial goals. Our financial goal is Portage Township School values financial decisions that positively impact students. Portage Township Schools values responsible stewardship, accountability to community taxpayers, and forward thinking as it pertains to budgets and finance. Portage Township Schools shall strive to increase the percentage of spending for the student instructional expenditure categories as compared to other expenditure categories as described in Indiana Code 20-42.5-3 for the next fiscal year by identifying efficiencies in all expenditure categories. Spending decisions will be based upon whether the expenditure helps to achieve the following district goals. PTS will create a culture of high achievement. PTS will create a culture of technology innovation. PTS will create a culture of collaboration and acceptance in a safe and secure learning environment, and PTS will be nationally recognized. Board of Trustees approved October 23rd, 2023. Do we have a motion to approve resolution R-7-2023? I'm sorry, R-6-2023, the financial goals.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing un-called, roll please.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vazquez?
Yes.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
And one more resolution. Approval of resolution R-7-2023 for appropriations and tax rates for 2024. So we'll read these for our, for the Fund Code 61, the Rainy Day Fund. Adopted budget is $4 million. Fund Code 180, debt service. The adopted budget is $9,70,948,000. That total amount is the except adopted tax levy, which comes to .03429 cents. The school, category 186, school pension debt, $663,940. Again, the adopted tax levy is $663,940, and the adopted tax rate is .0251 dollars. The category 3101 education is $53,627,806. And the category 3300 operations is $24,179,624. The adopted tax rate of the operations fund is $13,749,038, which is a .5197 dollar. So the total would be $91,542,318 as our adopted budget. Our adopted tax levy is $23,483,926, and a .8877 dollar tax rate. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution R-7-2023 appropriation and tax rates?
I make a motion to approve the resolution for appropriations and tax rates for the year 2024.
A second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing un-called, roll please.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vazquez?
Yes.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes.
Next, we have our second reading of and approval for our Neola policies. Dr. Allenis?
Yes, so attached are the policies that were reviewed in our policy committee meeting. We did have the first reading on those after trustee Vazquez and trustee Wilkie Wireman and I met. Although, of course, we know the statute no longer requires discussion to be shared with the Teachers Association, it is our continued desire to make certain that we keep that collaborative relationship. So these were sent to the Porter Association of Teachers Executive President, Executive Board President, Sean Chamberlain. Attached are all of those policies that have went through first reading with the necessary adjustments and changes based on the recommendations of Neola and ISBA, as well as in collaboration with the committee.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to accept the second reading and approval of Neola policies?
Make a motion to accept the second reading and approval of Neola policies?
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing un-called, roll please.
Trustee Vazquez?
Yes.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Next, we have an overnight, approval of an overnight field trip by the Portage High School to Six Flags for graduation night senior trip on May the 18th and 19th, 2024. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the overnight field trip to Six Flags?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing un-called, roll please.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vazquez?
Yes.
And our last piece of new business is our approval of contracts for curriculum. Hagerty Curriculum Renaissance. Dr. Allenis?
So in collaboration with our teachers regarding some additional curricular needs, you'll see that we have the recommendation for a subscription for one year for Hagerty phonemic awareness, which is a digital subscription in the amount of $2,492 for our primary grade teachers, and also a reading program digital subscription with Renaissance for this school year amounting to $17,043.60.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion or questions?
So what kind of feedback have you received from the teachers, especially the kindergarten teachers, about this program?
About Hagerty?
Yes.
Specifically, we were recognizing the need for specific phonemic instruction and the importance of building those phonics skills. So with that, we have a lot of insight with our Dibbles program, but the intervention opportunities were very significantly lacking as far as district alignment across the entire district. So this is explicit phonemic instruction for our teachers to be able to utilize so that our students learn how to read with those very specific early literacy skills at the forefront. They have really enjoyed the various products. We are exploring more. Mrs. Williams also just put in for a competitive grant with the science of reading for decodable readers. We had a call today that Dr. Stevens arranged for Linda, myself, and Stephanie. We sat on that call about additional opportunities for intervention, specific phonemic intervention even at the intermediate grades, too. So we are, our teachers are definitely on board, and they're driving the bus as far as letting us know with the science of reading what their needs are and what materials are in need.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
Just one question, and it's more about the kindergarten students that are coming to us. Is there an opportunity for us to partner with our local preschool programs? And what does that look like to even maybe start that, these kind of opportunities earlier and even to give the families access to these resources? Because if we can get it head-on, that's a real good tier to partner with these daycare centers in our community.
Great idea.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing un-called, roll please.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vazquez?
Yes.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
Okay, next, we'll move on to our superintendent reports. Dr. Allenis?
So I would like to congratulate the Willow Creek Braves football team. They went undefeated in the Lake Porter Conference in 2023. They are the champions. So congratulations to all of those student athletes and their coaches as well. It's a huge accomplishment, and we look forward to seeing what they can do for us on the field there in high school. Also, congratulations to the PHS Boys Cross Country. This is Shane Conroy, Noah Bastel, Landon Miller, and Ben Lagunas, who will compete at the IHSAA Cross Country State Finals this weekend. And also, our girls will be competing, excuse me, at the IHSAA Cross Country State Finals. I will send you their specific names, those we did not get in time. As you know, I am a member of the Exchange Club alongside Mr. Stills, and we have partnered with them, and there is a coin fundraiser currently going on to raise funds for Veterans Matter, which is an organization that supports the homeless veterans across the state of Indiana. It's specific to each state. It is a national organization. So they are competing vaguely against Willow Creek, and the winning school will get to slime, that principal will slime the other principal, and it will be livestreamed for the winning school to view. So we were trying to get them involved in something meaningful. I did also want to share with you that parent teacher conferences went very well. Dr. Stevens and I are currently digging in to get you some totals of just how many families were able to have some sort of engagement with parent teacher conferences, whether a phone call, whether an exchanged email, or in-person or virtual. Our idea is that any type of engagement where we're talking about student achievement and how the school and family work as one unit to support that student is something that should be celebrated. I did also want to share with you something that we also have in effect right now with the Exchange Club, but something that is available to all citizens is the Golden Years Club, which allows our families to have those, excuse me, our students to have family members and community members 62 years of age or older that can come to all of our events at the high school free of charge so long as it's not, you know, a sectional, a regional, that type of thing. We have those cards. They're available in the athletic office, or they can contact the administration building. We had them ask us for it specifically at the Exchange Club, and just last Wednesday we handed out nine, and they won a list of all of our upcoming events. So they plan to be very active.
Is that something we will communicate through?
We can also communicate that. Yes, absolutely. So I also would like to do a big push with the Bonner Center, because again, these are great opportunities for our seniors to be out and showing their support for our youth, and it's a great, great way to fill. Oh, okay. Perfect, thank you. Real quick, I'll go back to that. So Dr. Stevens was able to get the girls for us for state, Madison Mickles, Hannah Walsh, Brianna Craft, Madeline Feldman, Brooklyn Reed, Alana Sweeney, and Kara Craft. Thank you. I do also want to mention that I'll work with President Malata on the work session for both the ISBA conference and the CUBE conference so that we can make sure to do that. I'm assuming we'll probably want to do that in November so that the time doesn't get away from us, since we do only have one meeting in December. I also want to share with all of you that we are a recipient, being honored again at the greater, let's see here, I'm losing my words, the Chamber event on Friday, November 17th, from 6:00 to 9:00 at Woodland Park. This, well, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to share what the honor is for yet, so I won't do that quite yet. But we are one of the recipients being honored that evening. It is an 80s party. So if you would like to attend, I did let Mrs. Simpson know that I would get back regarding the number of attendees, and I'll ask Mrs. Lindgren to send that out specifically tomorrow, but I did want to share that with you. As you're aware, we do have October 30th, which is our special meeting regarding the tentative agreement that will be having, we will be having our hearing on. Also, November 8th is our regional meeting at T-Balls for Region One, for Indiana School Board Association's Fall Meeting.
And of course, our Region One Director is none other than?
Dr. Finley, yes.
Dr. Johna Finley.
November 13th, this is our regular board meeting. It is at Fagley, and that is also our ratification meeting. Couple small other items. The, I want to congratulate the Pride of Portage marching band on their great representation of our entire community and our school at state. They did place ninth in the state, so they definitely even made improvements from even last year. They did a really great job. The Songs Insider event with the choraleers went over very well. This is a completely, this is their fundraiser in the fall, and it's a great show for three hours. We did end up having to take it indoors to the auditorium. Founder's Square could not accommodate with the constant rain, so we decided that that was probably not in our best interest for the kids. Hispanic Heritage Month, I can't wait to share some of the things that have went on this month with all of you. I'll tell you one thing in particular was Willow Creek, they did a door decorating contest with their home rooms to be able to learn about Hispanic heritage and then kind of did a walk amongst the hallways to see how all of the doors represented their culture. So it was a great turnout, and they did, the kids voted on them, so I will share some of that with you as well. But other activities have also been completed this month, and we look forward to sharing. If I have one more item, it is to share with you the project that we wanted to come here this evening. You cannot hear the ventilator, the unit ventilator, because it's just not as loud as it's always typically been. I shared that as a teacher in Portage, you would be at 2:30 talking, and then when that thing would turn off, you would realize you were screaming when those things went off. You'll also notice that there are opportunities for the air to distribute more evenly throughout the room. There are four, what are those called? Doesn't it start with a D? What is it?
Registers.
Oh, does not start with a D. Four registers, so that it can.
Send her back to school.
Yeah, exactly. Whereas before, as you know, that air came in, and if you were close to the vent, you were freezing. If you were on the other side of the room, you were not so cold, you were relatively warm. So they're quieter in their operation, they're more comfortable with the airflow, more consistent temps, better humidity control, fresh air coming in, and again, being more evenly balanced. They're energy efficient, improved air filtration. We wanted to make sure we are providing our students and our staff with the healthiest environment. Last year, as you know, we upgraded in 2022 our elementary schools by installing LED energy-efficient lighting, and this indoor air quality project at Central and Sailor was completed over the summer. And next up is Crisman this coming summer in 2024. The scope of the project was to remove existing horizontal unit ventilators. You'll see that they will come back and finish some of these finishes here this coming summer. They will receive their new flooring in the classrooms in the schools that are completed. And this air distribution through our new duct system, again, is also reduction of noise. Let's see if there was anything else on there I wanted to mention. I want to commend Milay and his team. These units typically last 20 years. There were some that were well into their 30s, and they were well maintained, but we used a lot of the funding to be able to address air quality in the school district and plan to have a plan moving forward to continue this. I think it's a huge improvement. You heard just briefly when we talked about the noise reduction, and I will tell you on those extremely humid, hot days that we had this fall, I learned from Milay that they were working quite well. So it's a great upgrade, and we look forward to continuing this project. But again, it's just, it takes up less space. It will be, it's just an opportunity to have better air quality and comfort.
And on that note, I'd just, again, like to extend, you know, congratulations to Milay's staff, the custodial staff maintenance crew, and the administrators. Our buildings are old, and when you walk in our buildings, they don't look it. I mean, they're immaculately clean, they're bright, they're modernized, they're just so well taken care of. It's something we should all be very proud of, and if you could please pass that on to your staffs on how much we appreciate how well you take care of these assets that we have, that, you know, most of them were built in the late 50s, early 60s. And again, you would never, you would never know it coming in and seeing all the, how well they look and, and, you know, on our board, we've been able to in the last few years make those kind of hidden improvements that people don't really notice, such as the chillers and these registers and some of that airflow things, and the new libraries have been outstanding. So again, it's something I think we should all be proud of, the way our buildings are taken care of and some of the things we've been able to do without really going back to the taxpayers and asking for help.
Yes.
You know, good fiscal management, and that, again, credit to our financial team as well.
Absolutely.
Please pass our congratulations on, if you would, please.
We will do that, yes. And no better way to do that than the non-union increases that you just approved this evening for our support staff there. And I know we've got some agreements here on the horizon that are for our union folks too, so we appreciate all of them.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any items that are not on the agenda that anyone would like to bring up this evening? If not, I don't believe we received any public comment forms. So again, as Dr. Allen has mentioned, our next meeting is our special meeting on October the 30th for discussion of the tentative agreement, and then, of course, our next regularly scheduled board meeting is at Fagley Middle School on November the 13th. So if no one has anything else this evening, this meeting's adjourned.